... This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. However, the board may not discuss issues raised that are not listed on the agenda and no action will be taken. Speakers are requested to complete a speaker card, submit it to the secretary, and limit their comments on each item to three minutes. Please state your name and address when called upon to speak. The board shall limit the total time of public input on each item to 20 minutes. Speaker is Kristi Bridget.
Hi, my name is Kristi Bridget, and I'm here today to speak about the West End SELPA, which is an agency that's comprised of the ten school districts in this area serving the special education community. They have a budget of $171 million. They use $5 million of that in administration. I wanted to bring to the board's attention a recent letter that I was forwarded on from the Office of Management in the United States Department of Education regarding my particular school district, what was my school district, Altoona, because it concerns the SELPA. And I'll just read from it directly. "At the advice of the district's interim director of special education," which was Linda Spicer, which was a former special education person from here, "as well as our SELPA office, the student's name was in the contract to ensure that this contract was an individual contract for a specific student and not an open contract. However, when the contract went to the board for approval, the student's name appeared in the first paragraph of the contract." Just to kind of back up and give you a little bit of background, it had come to my attention that a contract for services for my child, his name was on the contract with all of the detailed private particulars. And apparently, the SELPA had advised the district, as well as the special education director interim, Linda Spicer at the time, that that was perfectly fine and not a violation. It was clearly a violation of ERPA. My personal opinion was that it was retaliation of some sort, because that's definitely a big no-no. Don't put a child's name on an agenda for the public to see when it involves their private I also wanted to bring it to the board's attention that the SELPA was recently found that regarding the community advisory committee, with the Office of District Attorney here in violation that they used improper use of email to potentially develop a collective concurrence. This is what I'm reading from the letter. "While members may cast on general information, it is improper to take a position on matters that may come before their agency." So the district attorney pointed that out. There is a lack of transparency, according to many of the parents and the people that deal with the West End SELPA. They had a budget hearing recently, and no questions were allowed. They said that, you know, "You're just here to kind of listen to us, and, you know, if you have any kind of comments, you know, if you can bring back to the superintendent, that's warranted, but no questions." And so we feel, as parents, you know, working on our own here, that more oversight is needed. And another point is, if the district administrators can't do the job, then they need step-down. Double administration in special education is unwarranted, especially in tough economic times. So I'm just here, basically, just to point out some of the ways that I know that this district would rely on the West End SELPA, but to point out some of the ways that they may mislead the district, and it's something you need to be aware of as a board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bridget.
My name is Rita Lou, and I'm here to express similar concerns about the West End SELPA, specifically to issues related in my case. As the board may recall, on the advice of the West End SELPA, this district spent $114,000 litigating against my child who has special needs, and the only request that we had was for about $20,000 worth of reading services for my child. She needs intensive reading instruction. The district had actually paid for those services already in a settlement agreement. The only remaining terms that were unfulfilled were providing assessments done by the district's own assessors, as well as holding an IEP meeting. Those were the only unfulfilled terms which the district and the SELPA chose to make a federal case, literally, out of it. Took me three years in federal court to overturn the state of California's decision to dismiss my case and not allow a hearing for my child, but I did get a federal court ruling in my favor. And some of the decisions on the administrative law judge decision from the state, once the case was heard, which I prevailed on the major issues, I substantially prevailed, were still litigating partially on some of those issues. So I am here to bring to your attention another issue that I believe West End SELPA is leading you down the same path, and I would hope that this does not happen again, because ultimately, as a citizen and a resident of Upland, I don't want my tax dollars to be spent in $114,000 of litigation. And that's just out of the West End SELPA pot. That doesn't include the district pot of money. That doesn't include the San Bernardino County of Schools pot of money devoted to special education litigation, and those are in the millions. I've totaled those for you and broken them down by year and sent you an email providing you those figures. Now, in the instance case, I filed for a mediation only, and according to OAH policies, that's the Office of Administrative Hearings, in a mediation only, it's supposed to be a non-adversarial proceeding, and there's no attorneys, legal representations, or advocates allowed. So I abide by those policies, and I'm not bringing my attorney or my advocate. The district is now imposing a condition on me that is untenable, because they would like me to allow the West End SELPA to be their legal representative at this mediation only. And I cannot agree, it's beyond my control to set aside OAH policies. I mean, we could challenge the OAH policy, and the district and the SELPA are free to do that, but right now, the policy is what it is. And I just don't understand how an agency could transfer power of attorney to another agency. The West End SELPA is a completely different entity, and the district needs to take ownership of our special education children. We should not be treated as second-class citizens. These children are residents of Upland. They deserve to have the same type of representation and access to the elected officials, which is the Board of Education here in Upland, as the general education kids. So I encourage you to work with your staff and encourage them to move on with this process. Otherwise, we're going to be back to litigation again, because, like I said, those conditions are completely beyond my control, and they are unnecessary. I have given you three documents. The mediation was scheduled in a location in Upland. The Upland district is required by federal law to have a mediation location available to conduct such hearings. I got a letter, copied on a letter from your attorneys that was sent to OAH stating that there was a mistake in the location and that it was originally located in a maintenance lot, so they needed to change the location to the West End SELPA. I never agreed to change the location. Now, I believe the location issue has been addressed, and I believe the district is moving forward on that, but we're still deadlocked on the issue of the West End SELPA coming to the mediation. They're not a party, and they shouldn't be there. So I encourage you to look into the matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lou.
Dave Palmer. Yes, and my name is Dave Palmer, and I am a parent of a special needs child in a district that's also served by the SELPA. And as a parent, I also did attend recently a meeting with Dr. Thomas and two other administrators of the county Department of Education in San Bernardino. And, you know, it's been, one of the things that's been kind of confusing to us as parents is who is responsible for the needs of our children? And Dr. Thomas made it clear that the local educational agency, Upland Unified School District in this case, Central School District in my case, is the responsible party, and so not the SELPA. So that was something that was clear there. And then, you know, I know for my own self, I just think it's much better to try and work things out and to, you know, educate our children versus getting into all this litigation. It's wasteful of taxpayers' dollars that doesn't give us any benefit, because our children graduate and they're not productive. I just watched a special from this weekend, or Father's Day, on CBS Morning Show about a father whose child was Down Syndrome, and the joy of his life was as an adult. He was independent, actually a restaurant owner, this young man. And what a joy it was for that father to know he could come and eat at that restaurant and leave and know that his child was living independently as an adult. And that's what us as parents want. We want to know that our children who have special needs, and, you know, they need help in acquiring learning, but they can do and achieve as everybody else. And we want them to be, we want them to be productive citizens in our city, in our society. We don't want them to be on the welfare rolls, in the penitentiaries, where we're now continuing to pay for them. I know in my personal case, the SELPA, the moment they got involved, it became very adversarial. When I started asking questions about my daughter, why wasn't she learning? Why wasn't she progressing as the other kids? You know, then the SELPA shows up, the administrator of the SELPA shows up to run, facilitate my daughter's IEP, and I thought, "Oh, they're here to help me." Well, it was very quickly I realized, no, they sat there and instructed the special ed director what to do, what to say, passing notes, whispering, and, you know, all it was was to shut the door on my child and to stop. And fortunately for me, I found an ally in my principal, my elementary school principal. She understood the situation. She knew my daughter, unlike the people that were sitting there shutting the door on my daughter. This principal knew my daughter, and so she came and spoke to the superintendent on a number of occasions, and we were able to, you know, after two years of trying, got the SELPA out of the meeting. And when the SELPA was out, we got business done. So I would just encourage you to work this out on your own, that you're responsible, and the SELPA is not helpful or beneficial when it comes to parents or children. And like I said, we, one of the things we just get concerned about is all the finger-pointing. We talk to the district, it's the SELPA. We talk to the SELPA, it's the district. And we talk to the county, it's, you know, it's, you know, the fingers just get pointed around, and we're tired of it. Someone needs to take responsibility, and someone needs to, you know, educate our children and stop litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Thank you all for speaking out tonight. Perhaps Dr. Rutherford in the next package.
It's actually in your packet you're receiving today.
It is, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to administrative reports.
Thank you, Ms. Angela. My great pleasure to introduce to our audience, our board had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Ron Bennett from School Services of California. For years, School Services of California has been the premier agency in the state, bringing fiscal advice to school districts and assisting school districts through what has become an unprecedented fiscal season. I will tell you that Mr. Bennett will suggest that I am his mentor, because he claims that I'm older than he, but let me assure you that, just ignore those references altogether. Ron does bring years, even some say centuries, of experience to School Finance of California. We're very pleased to have you come here and share an update with the board and answer any questions and expertise that you may have.
You know, I was picking on Dr. Rutherford one time, and thank you, by the way, for that kind introduction. And I said, you know, "I recall that you were an assistant superintendent when I was in the second grade." And he said, "I recall that too. You were the only 55-year-old second grader I ever had." And so the first liar has no chance. So thank you for inviting me. Our offices are across from Capitol up in Sacramento. I have to be down here this week, and so Dr. Rutherford invited me to come and address the board and the public and to give you some of my views on the state budget that actually got signed this morning. And you're going to have a budget presentation later today on your district budget, but I thought I might spend a moment and just kind of put in context some of the choices that are before the board, some of the issues that the board will have to deal with as we move through this year. So this will be the fifth year since the state of California reduced your budget significantly. Your budget hit a high-water mark in 2007/08, and you have lost more than $600 per student since that time. You should have gained about $900, making the net change about $1,500 per student. And so the budget that you will have to work with for this next year assumes a very low level of funding, perhaps last in the nation now. There were four districts below us, but over the last four years, we've made cuts. Most of those states have, I said districts, I meant four states below us, and those four states have all increased spending for education. So we could arguably be last when the latest statistics come out for 2011, '12 or so. So as you develop your budget, that isn't the worst of the news. That is the best of the news. The best case is that if the governor's taxes that he has put on the November ballot pass, you will be funded at the same level that you were funded for 2011, '12, in 2012, '13. In other words, flat funding. I'll talk about some of the particulars of that in just a moment, but overall, flat funding. But if the taxes fail, you would be subjected to another cut of $457 per student. The number was 441 previously, but for the adopted budget this morning, we've recalculated the number, and it is $457, ongoing as an additional cut. So you've already lost $600 from where you were in 2007/08. You would now be down more than $1,000 from where you were in 2007/08. And if those taxes pass, you're flat. If those taxes fail, you lose that $457. When would you lose it? In the middle of this school year. So you'd have already started the year, you have all your staff in place, all of your students in class, and then you're subject to this loss. And so because of that, county superintendents and school services are advising districts to plan for that loss, to plan for the taxes failing, and have a backup plan to use that money if the taxes pass. But if the taxes fail, you're going to need to have a place in your budget, someplace where you can reduce costs. The one thing that the governor is offering, and I don't think you'll like it very much, is that if the taxes fail, right now, you have the authority, you have a state law that says 180 days of school. You have the authority to take five days off of the school year to save money. You have to negotiate that with your bargaining units. The governor has proposed this year that if the taxes fail, you would have an additional 15 days. So you would be able to reduce the school year from 180 days to 160 days. California's student achievement is very low, despite the efforts of our professional teachers, our school boards, our classified staff, our administrators, all of whom have more students per person than any other state. So our class sizes are the highest in the nation now and are growing higher, but all of those people, despite their best efforts, California's student achievement is in the bottom five in the nation. And so this shortening the year to 20 days is not going to be something that anyone's going to be enthusiastic about, nor your employees going to be enthusiastic about losing a month's pay. So this is a challenge that the board will have. How long will you have this challenge? Sometimes boards ask me, "If we make the budget cuts that are recommended this year, will we be finished?" And the answer is no. You're probably going to make budget cuts every single year until California's economy recovers and the state has the ongoing revenue to begin to restore funding to schools and pay those annual cost-of-living adjustments. Your costs of employment, your costs of health benefits, your cost of fuel, cost of instructional materials continue to go up every single year, and your revenues continue to go down. In a private business, that would be a recipe for bankruptcy. School districts are not allowed to go bankrupt. Who do they turn to for assistance? State of California. State of California's broke. This is not a good sugar daddy for us to have, right? We have a broke sugar daddy. So local boards around the state have been responsible for the fact that while we've had cities go bankrupt, we've had counties declare that they are going to go bankrupt. We have not had a single school district go bankrupt during this five-year period. We've had one district that had to get a state loan from something that happened 10 years ago, but as, it was a legal issue. But as a result of the recession, we have had none. Why? Because boards, employee organizations, administrations, and the public are all working together to protect the interests of their students around the state. And your district has been exemplary in that respect. You have a, I've looked at your financials, you have a well-managed district, you are doing what you can do internally, but there is only so much you can do without some assistance from the state of California. There are a couple of things in the budget that I will mention. One is that the transportation funding that you receive will be ongoing for at least one more year. So you will have that, and any cuts are all rolled into that $457 that I talked about. Another is transitional kindergarten is now the law of the land. And so for children whose birthday falls in that September 2nd to December 1st window, you will be required to offer a transitional kindergarten, in other words, a pre-kindergarten program for them beginning in '12. So you'll be paid for that, but the logistics of offering it, especially with the decision made so late by the state of California, will be yet another challenge that you'll have to face. In this county, San Bernardino County, there's a lot of dependence on redevelopment money. And as of the passage of the budget, this has been a sporting proposition over the last two weeks as to whether you would get your redevelopment pass-through. It now appears that you will get the pass-through as it was scheduled and as the governor proposed it back in January. So the loss of that pass-through would be very significant for districts in San Bernardino County. The redevelopment agencies across the state, and I'll say this because I think that this is a big issue for you, the amount of property tax that goes to redevelopment agencies across the state averages 12%. The lowest is San Francisco County at zero, the highest is San Bernardino County at 33%. So 33% of the property tax in San Bernardino County has gone to redevelopment agencies, and much of that money has been passed through to school districts through pass-through agreements that have been required by law. If the state were to stiff you on those agreements, it would be a significant loss of revenue. And today, it appears the state will meet its obligations under AB 1290 and will pay those obligations. So I've given you four or five things that I pulled out of the budget that I thought might be of interest to you, but let me just conclude by saying, when you adopt your budget tonight, you are adopting your budget based on a state budget that has a $9 billion hole in it. So when the governor announced this morning, I have signed a balanced budget. It is balanced if and only if the governor's taxes pass in November. And the holes on those taxes will change from time to time, but what, I guess what I want you to be aware of is that if those taxes fail and you have to take that $457 cut, you will need to be prepared for it, and there aren't many things you can do in the middle of the year, so you really have to do them now. So you're going to get a tough budget that is really going to stress the district and the board to try to live within the revenues that you have, but I think you have to do what you've always done. I think you have to stand up and make the changes that are necessary to protect the students of the City of Upland. We'll be stopped there. Questions?
Yeah, it seems like every time we come to a meeting, that number, that cut number keeps getting higher and higher and higher. You mentioned 451. Do you know those numbers? You see that continuing to go up, or you think we sort of plateaued at 451, or what's your general thought on that number?
You know, the governor, I believe the governor is trying to protect public education in the best way that he can. We have a terrible economy with 11% of people unemployed, many of those people who used to be taxpayers and now tax receivers, and that puts a lot of stress on the state as well to pay for those services. And so what the governor's strategy has been is that I will propose a cut to education and then try to avoid making that cut. And then I will push that cut further and further out. Well, these unrectified budget difficulties that get pushed further out have continued to get bigger. So we get a proposal for a cut. That cut isn't made, but it's replaced by the promise of another cut later and bigger. And so I think that it is very likely that the taxes fail, because the state's ongoing budget problem has grown from $9 billion in January to $16 billion today and continues to grow. I think the pressure will be to have a bigger cut. And maybe sooner or later, there will be a day of reckoning where it has to be made. I think the governor's preference is still to push it forward and hope for a better year. And hope is a, hope is a good thing to have, but hope is not a plan. I hope I addressed that.
Yes. We're going to hope.
Yeah, we're going to hope.
We need a plan. Thank you.
That 33% number you just gave us for redevelopment pass-through in San Bernardino County, so that is just in this budget year, and then what's to become, or what are your thoughts on the future of redevelopment and that money?
So there aren't any redo, there aren't any new redevelopment projects. And so the governor's legislation earlier this year eliminated the redevelopment agencies. They have successor agencies. Those successor agencies are collecting the tax increment. They are paying the existing debt of the redevelopment agencies, and as that debt gets paid down, those taxes revert to the state of California. But during the period that the project is still alive, while that debt is still out there, if you have a pass-through agreement that was for mitigation of that project for your district, you would still be paid that amount of money. Now, if that project is a 20-year project with 15 years to go, at the end of that 15 years, then those payments would stop, as they would have if the redevelopment agency was still there. The difference is that if the redevelopment agency was still there, over the next 15 years, they would have started some new projects. And so as this one went away, maybe the old project, then the new ones would come in, and you would have a pretty steady stream. A lot of districts have bonded against that stream and used it for their facilities needs and for other things. And so it is, it's a big hit if that money stopped. So what I predict is that at this time, anyway, there is no move to, not by the governor anyway, to reinstate the redevelopment agencies. So I think they will be allowed to die off. I think that property tax will come back to the state of California, and the state of California benefits from it, not the individual school districts.
Mr. Bennett, thank you so much for being with us and lending your expertise to this budget process.
Thank you very much for inviting me. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Mr. Bennett, thank you so much for being with us and lending your expertise to this budget process.
Thank you very much for inviting me. Have a good evening. Thank you.
We'll move on to item 3.0, consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the board request items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
I'll move the item. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Do we need to make the change?
No, and that's just, that's a revision page.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving item 3.0 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item 4.0, personnel, public hearing. Government Code 3547 provides for a public hearing on matters related to initial proposals presented to its bargaining representatives. The district is giving notice to the teachers association, its intent to open Article 21, compensation of the collective bargaining agreement for negotiations in '12, '13, and is being presented for public hearing.
This would be an opportunity for anybody in the community or public to address the board on this topic.
Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move the item.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving item 4.2 is presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. So moved. Item 4.3, UTA negotiations.
Mrs. Black.
Thank you, Dr. Rutherford. Members of the board, item 4.3 is the district's initial proposal to the association to negotiate compensation changes for the '12, '13 school year that, at the time that we wrote this, was equal to the 441 per student ADA cut, which is $11 million in this district, should the November tax initiative fail. So at this point in time, we are officially opening negotiations with the passage of this.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 4.3 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item 4.4, Assistant Superintendent Ed Services.
Mrs. Angone, I'm very pleased tonight to bring a recommendation. I have already shared with Dr. Kaminsky that it was never a good idea to write your assistant superintendent a letter of recommendation for a superintendent position. But if you do that, you only want to do it if you have somebody like Lori Thompson on deck. And I'm very pleased to bring a recommendation that Lori Thompson be appointed as our assistant superintendent of ed services. The board and the district knows the board is well, work well, and already she is having sleepless nights and, and is appropriate and gearing up for this new opportunity, and I recommend her with pride. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 4.4 as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. So moved. Congratulations, Mrs. Thompson.
Security.
We are familiar with the board's work. Item 4.5, Assistant Superintendent Ed Services Employment Contract.
Before she can change her mind by approving this item, I will force Lori's signature onto her employment contract as a contract employee and member of cabinet.
Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 4.5 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item 4.6, Modification of Contract Assistant Superintendent's Sixth Addendum Annual Compensation.
Mrs. Black, please. Let me explain this one.
Yeah, thanks. I need you to do them all.
I think that's probably a good idea.
Item 4.6 and 4.7, 4.8, and I think that's it, are all items that, as Mr. Bennett said, trying to address the budget shortfall that we know is going to happen in, potentially in January. One of the things that the employees, as we've met with different groups, have decided is we want to be prepared ahead of time for potential cuts. It's a lot easier to give it up now in shorter increments over a longer period of time than to have to take a deeper cut come January. So items, these items that are addendums to the assistant superintendents, the superintendent's contracts, and the management and confidential salary schedules are for a 7.78% salary rollback, which is also equivalent to 15 workday reductions for the 2012, 2013 school year.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Black. Should these be taken as part of the, I see, I prefer updated. So this is regarding management confidential reductions.
Exactly. The other cable item in front of you, that was the reposting.
Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll move the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion on this item?
Thank you. So what that means is Lori kind of...
Yeah, congratulations on Lori.
Yeah, for two years she had that.
It's your first and then your...
It looked good for a minute, didn't it?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving item 4.6 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item 4.7, this is then the, this is the sixth addendum and the compensation. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor of approving item 4.7 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. 4.8, Superintendent's Seventh Addendum Annual Compensation. Is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor of approving item 4.8 is presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. So moved. Yes, we very much appreciate our associations coming to us with these concessions. This is a difficult time for all of us, and the better prepared we are, hopefully down the road, the easier it will be on all of us. So thank you so much. Item 5.0, Curriculum and Instruction, approval to contract with Intel Assess, to provide assessment content-related tools to create published assessments.
Kaminsky, please.
Thank you. We are in the process of establishing a strong pattern of carefully analyzing student performance on frequent common formative assessments. And in this process, we have encountered two things. One is that there was a need for an updated database system, which was previously approved by the board, and when that happens, there's a need to also identify and purchase an item bank of items, test items that can be used to develop his common formative assessment. And that is what this, this particular item is for, to integrate a system that will analyze student performance with a system that provides items that can be used to measure student performance. We're pleased, we're pleased as we move forward with the improvement that we've seen over the years in the, in the systems and the richness and robustness of them. This particular system in particular has many items that are aligned to their core standards, so we're anticipating it will help support our solutions.
Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'll move the item. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item 5.1 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item 6.1, Home School Transportation.
Mr. Forsyth, please.
Did you call Dr. Rutherford? Is there something you wanted to do?
Yes.
Good evening, board members. Thank you, Dr. Rutherford. This evening, our transportation report, I'm hoping the third time's a charm. And what we're going to be doing this evening is presenting...
Hello again. I wasn't going to comment on this budget until I heard the word "encroachment" in special education. And I wanted to clarify a couple of points on that. The special education population always gets blamed for encroaching in the general education population and on that budget. And I think it's a divisive way to divide the parent community, and we really don't appreciate those divisive terms being used. I also wanted to clarify that when Chino Valley Unified proposed to move $3 million from the special ed budget that they had in stimulus money over to the general ed budget, nobody called that encroachment. But it's easy to attack the voiceless in society and those who can't really speak for themselves, and especially children. So I wanted to leave you with a couple of statistics for you to think about. I've recently read research that shows the per pupil spending in Washington, D.C., and of course, the D.C. districts have the worst student performance in the nation, that per pupil spending is up to $29,000 per year, per pupil. So there's really no correlation. I mean, we're under these impressions that more money is going to fix the problem, and we all know what happens, what we, if we dump more money into a lemon, it's not necessarily going to fix the problem. What is going to fix the problem is innovative solutions and working smarter, not harder. When we met with Dr. Thomas, Dave Palmer, earlier, mentioned that we had a meeting with him, and the first thing he asked us was to help him raise more money. And we said, why should we? When we feel like our tax dollars are being mismanaged? Why should we help you raise more money when you're going to use that money to litigate against the kids and not educate the kids? And he asked, well, do you have any suggestions? I said, yeah, take those $114,000 that you guys spent on litigating against my child and teach 10 special education kids how to read. We parents operate on a shoestring budget, okay? I have to privately pay for services for my daughter, and I do that on my own budget, and I do better than the school districts. So I know you have well-meaning staff, but they need the tools. You can analyze trends. You can look at the programs that parents are litigating for. It's very obvious to us, parents litigate for certain programs. Reading instruction, you're looking at Linham Bell. So send your teachers to a couple of days' worth of training at Linham Bell, and you are going to eliminate the need for parents to litigate for that service, because the kids will be learning to read. So Ontario Moncler School District already has an in-house Linham Bell program. They may not get the results that they get at the clinic with the intensive remediation. I use Linham Bell for my daughter on my own, and I definitely don't get the same results. But some kids don't need that intensive remediation, and at least they'll be learning to read. The other thing is that the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is a grant statute. This was held by a federal court when the teachers' union sued Margaret Spillings, the Bush-appointed Secretary of Education. It is not an unfunded mandate. This question was already answered by the court. So if districts don't feel that they can provide the services required by IDEA, then they simply need not apply for the grant. The grant is very specific. The grant requires local educational agencies and the state, actually, who applies on behalf of these agencies, to make assurances of compliance. And the state has to swear that, you know, federal government, give us this money because we swear we're going to educate these kids. We swear we are going to provide the appropriate education for these kids. So they make all those promises, and then once the money comes in, all of a sudden, you know, these kids are burdened, these kids encroach on our general fund. So I leave you with those thoughts, and I encourage you to look into that $171 million budget at the West End Sefa, who is not proposing any cuts for their staff, and actually, before the administrator-elect, I think this week is her last week, she proposed to give herself a 25%, uh, 25% raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lee. Any, any other public comments? Thank you. Any other motion?
I'll move the item.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item 6.4 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item 6.5, adopt the final budget. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move the item.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 6.5 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Item 6.6, Resolution 06-28-12A, approval to apply for a secure grant...